Roll call, please.
Emick?
Here.
Benajak?
Here.
Mallett?
Here.
Herrick?
Here.
Radke?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Bigick?
Here. Please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Almighty God, we ask that you will guide and give leadership to every member of this Board of Commissioners, and we ask that you will give them knowledge and understanding so that the decisions made today and always will benefit every citizen for this community. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have the minutes from our last meeting.
I'll move on. Support?
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Agenda approval. We do have an amendment.
Yes. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to amend Resolution Number 2024-181 on the amount to correct the my-- it's listed as $23,000 and amended to $17,106.
Is important.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Citizen input. Looking for any citizen input. Step up to the mic. Citizen input. Last call, citizen input. It's closed. Petitions/Communications. We have applications for appointment to Bay County Building Authority. One unexpired six-year term, which will expire 11/30/26. We need to receive the applicants and appoint.
Support. Well, we got it. We got it, Tom. We got it.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll go ahead and do the voting at this time. Person one votes.
You ready? Benajak?
Dennis.
Mallett?
Robert Mead.
Herrick?
Mead.
Radke?
Mead.
Johnson?
Mead.
Emick?
Benajak.
Bigick?
Benajak.
So, four for Mead, three for Benajak.
So, I need a motion to appoint Robert Mead to the Building Authority?
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. City of Bay City, application for an obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate, 703 Washington Avenue.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We now have reports, resolutions of the committees. Committee of the whole did not meet on November 5th. They were referred to the full board. We have the committee of the whole from November 12th, 2024. Mr. Benajak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Resolution Number 2024-180, 2025 Bay County Budget. I move this resolution.
I'll support it.
Discussion? Mr. Herrick?
I'd like to make an amendment to the budget to exclude healthcare for the Bay County Commissioners, along with the stipend for not taking the healthcare. That'd be my amendment to the resolution.
I support.
Support.
Okay. Discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
It seemed like two years ago, this was also on the agenda when the outgoing Commissioners wanted to eliminate the healthcare and the pay for the new coming Commissioners. It seems like it's the same old thing from two years ago. Can you explain why, Tom? You doing this again?
I can. I can.
Go ahead.
Right now, I could tell you that if you went to Saginaw or Midland or just about any place else, the Commission does not get healthcare. The county portion for healthcare for Commissioner next year will be $29,000. So, add that to your salary, so now we're putting up a Commissioner at a $43,000 salary, which I think is a little extreme for what we do here. I mean, we do, we work hard, but I don't know that it's worth-- you have a lot of employees in the county that work hard that don't, that don't get those kind of, that don't reap that benefit. You know, that they're making $15 an hour, they see, they see what we do. We're, you know, when I came, when I came here, I never had, I didn't care about the healthcare. You know, I mean, I knew I was okay. You know, I had, I worked hard and it worked out for me. And the same with a lot of other Commissioners. But I don't think that this number, this number is, I don't think, I don't know how people can live with it. You know, I mean, say, yeah, you guys deserve, we should have healthcare. And I don't, and I just don't think we should. I never have. You know, I've, I've had this thought before and, and, you know, I've always been, I kind of got beat down before with it. But it needs, it needs, it needs to go away. I mean, if you, this is, the job is, you know, you, there's a salary that comes with the job, and there's other places, other little stipends in that job too. And we eliminated a lot of those before, a couple of years ago, and you've always said that. You know, you've done that since, since the day I started on this Commission, and you got, like, four years ago, you know, finally went through. But that's my, that's my logic. It's just, you know, you could, you could put us, put a Commissioner, you'll have some Commissioners that are good for, like, whatever, you know, maybe 14,000, 15,000, and the person sitting next to him is good for 40,000. It doesn't seem, it doesn't seem right. And then to explain that, like I said, to the people who work here every day, is it even harder, it's a harder push for me. I just don't think it's right. That's my reason.
Mr. Benajak? I'd like to re-vote on what you would just said about 29,000 for a package. Excuse me, but, Tom, you're wrong. I get healthcare as 18,000, 19,000 for my wife and I. 29,000 is a package if you sit there and work as a full-time employee. We do not get 29,000. You're wrong there. Okay? And another thing, every one of us has the opportunity to get insurance. Colleen and I, they're the only ones to get it. Everybody else has got it through their work or their retirement. You as a firefighter, you got it through your retirement, right?
Correct.
Okay. Kathy's got it through retirement. So, it's two of us that got it. Okay? So, thirty-some thousand dollars. So, but two years ago, you guys voted for us new coming Commissioners to get it, eliminate that. Remember that? Why? Why is it, why did he change two years ago? Tell me why? Last year, you wanted to get rid of it? Now you want to get rid of it again? What is that?
I have a, I want to refer to our legal department. Since I, several years ago, we were told that we are full-time employees and that they have to offer healthcare. So, I don't know if that position has changed.
So, I can address this, or the personnel department can address this, which, which do? Okay. So, under the ACA, if there are full-time employees, Commissioners, any employee can receive, we're required to provide them with health insurance. And we discussed this. I don't believe that this was brought up two years ago. I think this was brought up a number of years ago.
No.
But it was not brought up two years ago. Whether or not the ACA required us to provide that insurance. And we indicated to the Commissioners that if, in fact, you were willing to sign an affidavit that indicated that you were not working more than 29 hours per week, that you would automatically be excluded from that requirement that we provide healthcare, and the Commissioners were unwilling to do so. We also indicated that the Commissioners could turn in timesheets to indicate that they were not working more than 29 hours per week, and if they were willing to do so, that the county would not be required to provide health insurance. And the Commissioners at that point in time were not willing to do so. I don't believe that the $1,800 stipend for not taking the health insurance was addressed at either of those votes. That's a new issue that we have not discussed before. The ACA is not implicated in that. I would also note that the county is required to provide health insurance under the ACA to all full-time employees with an exception of a certain, what is that?
Five percent.
Five percent. So, we can be off by five percent, and if it was not provided to the Commissioners, we would fall within that five percent, and we would not be penalized for it. So, it is a choice that the Commissioners can make as to whether or not they want to retain that benefit.
Any more discussion?
By the way, would you address the chair versus addressing each other?
Absolutely. So, comment was made that this came up two years ago. I was here two years ago. This topic did not come up. What did come up was removing the, of the stipend that goes with certain meetings that you can attend. But I know that it didn't come up two years ago, because if it had, I would have voted to revoke that. When I ran in 2020, I'm doing research before you go ahead and actually run for a position, I discovered that in 2012, the Commission essentially voted themselves to get healthcare for what is essentially a part-time position. Our part-time employees don't get that benefit. And there's lots of people that I know, when I went around and talked to people in my district that were completely surprised that this benefit was allotted to the Commissioners, and they weren't really happy about the size of the package. In 2022, when I acquired, just approximately how much it would have cost for just my wife and I, the portion that the, that the county would have picked up, and that was 2020. 2021, it was almost $18,000. So, if you add that on to the cost of the, you know, $12,000 base pay approximately, you're looking at a substantial amount. And when you compare that to, like, the city Commissioners who are making, I think, around $8,000 in base pay, you're looking, and with the increase in pay depending on the contracts as things go up, and the chair's amount that would be allotted, which is 20% on top of that, you're looking at some, you're looking at a pay package and a benefits package that could creep into the 40,000s, which would be five times what a city Commissioner is making. It just seems like a lot. And it really is, and that money is coming out of the pockets of people who, who can't afford that type of care. So, if it was to have come up two years ago, I would have voted to get rid of it, and the opportunity is here, so, because I had talked to people who, I let them know if I had that opportunity, I would, so.
Any more discussion?
Mr. Chair, I just want to make one clarification. I know that this is coming up as part of the budget discussion, because this is included in the budget. I want to make clear that healthcare is a fringe benefit that is not included in a compensation package. So, this is not the board voting on the next term's compensation package, which, which has to be done before the new board takes their seats. Healthcare is a fringe benefit and not a compensation issue that you're voting on. So, I just want to make sure that that distinction is clear if there was any confusion.
So, what we decide here doesn't apply to the next Commission, then you're saying?
What you decide here would apply to the next Commission until it was voted differently. Okay? What I'm saying, what I'm saying is, this is not a compensation issue that you are voting on, that is going to 100% last and cannot be changed throughout the course of the next Commission's tenure, because it is not compensation. The law says that if you're going to change your compensation as Commissioners, the outgoing board has to vote on what the incoming board gets, and it can't change during that four years. Healthcare is not compensation under the statute, it is a fringe benefit. So, I just wanted to make sure that that is clear before.
Any more discussion? So, we will call the questions. So, let's clarify the amendment again. Could you restate it?
I don't even know what I said. It'll be the elimination of healthcare and the stipend for not taking healthcare out of the budget.
Any more discussion? Let's call the questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Amber, is that classified, did he say that right? That's a fringe benefit, and he's taking out on the package for next year.
It is a budgeted dollar amount. You are budgeting for that potential fringe benefit for all of the Commissioners that come in. Whether it's utilized or not, it's still a budgeted number. He's moving to remove that from the budget, so if that were to be provided to the Commissioners next year, that you would have to vote to do that, there would have to be a budget adjustment.
I also have written down to amend the budget to exclude health insurance for County Commissioners. So, we're not removing health insurance in general, we're removing health insurance for just these employees. Does that sound right, Tom? Okay. And the state.
Yeah, she said, she said, she said what you said.
I can't hear you, but, yeah. He said it's okay.
Okay. We're going to start with Mallett.
So, we're voting.
So, we're voting yes or no on Thompson and Hinn.
So, yes means to go, get rid of it.
To amend the budget.
Yes.
Herrick?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Emick?
No.
Benajak?
No.
Bigick?
Tough call for me, because I've been voting for all along, not that I have healthcare. So, I'm going to vote no. Or, yeah, excuse me, sorry, yes. I'll vote yes, because I've been trying to do it for 20 years, so.
Five ayes, two nays.
Motion down.
And just for clar, just for clarification, so I'm aware that is to not provide health insurance to County Commissioners and not provide the stipend for not taking the health insurance.
With that amended amendment to the Bay County Budget, we need to, so we had a motion already, so we need an motion to approve the amended version of the Bay County Budget.
Support.
Discussion? Let's take a roll call vote.
Herrick?
Yes.
Radke?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Emick?
Yeah.
Benajak?
Yes.
Mallett?
Yes.
Bigick?
Yes.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
All right. Continue.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Resolution Number 2024-181, JAG application for the year 2024 and 2025. I move this resolution.
Support.
Do you want to clarify anything in the amended resolution?
It's amended.
Yes, it's amended.
Thank you.
And it was our support?
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-182, Road Patrol Township Contracts for the year 2025. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-183, Lateral Transfer Recommendation for Road Patrol Deputy. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-184, Reorganization of Bay County Community Corrections to Bay County Courts. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-185, United Way of Bay County Spark Hope for the Holiday Program. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-186, 2025 Remontation Program Grant. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-187, Emergency Management Performance Grant, EMPG Agreement for the year 2024. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-188, Appointment of Attorney Magistrate Mr. James A. Perry. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-189, 2024, 2025 Grant Awards. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-190, Premium Pay for Direct Care Workers Ending 2025. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-191, Region 7 Purchase of Service Agreement for the 2024 and 2025 Year. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-192, Agreement with My Sidewalk Incorporated for Community Health Assessment. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-193, Parental Care System Quality Improvement Initiative Grant for 2025 Year. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-194, Access Technology Service Agreement. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-195, Nurse Practitioners and Physician Assistance Agreement for the year 2025. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-196, Mortgage Agreement with McLaren Bay Region for 2024 and 2026 Years. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-197, Brown &amp; Brown Agreement. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-198, 85-15 Split for Healthcare for 2025 Year. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-199, Weight Management Solution Agreement. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-200, Virtual Muscle and Joint Health Program Agreement. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Number, Resolution Number 2024-201, Delta Dental Contract for the 2025 Year. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-202, EHIM Vaccination Amendment. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-203, Blue Cross Blue Shield Schedule A for 2025. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution Number 2024-204, RFP Bid Award for Bay County Mosquito Control, Geopeshow Web-Based Data Management System to Frontier Precision. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And Resolution Number 2024-205, Payables.
Support.
I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. There's a lot. Board of Commissioners, Mr. Herrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Resolution Number 2024-206, Reports of the County Executive for October. I move this resolution.
Support.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those in favor carries.
That's it.
A short one. Reports of County Officials, County Executive.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There hasn't been a whole lot transpired since our last meeting, but I will say that we did have our initial meeting on the community center pool, and I see some supporters of the pool here in the audience. Alice, good to see you. And talked about whether bonds would be sold and how the financing will come about and what kind of timeframe we're looking at. And that was the initial meeting, and we'll be moving forward. And it was a close vote, but the people of Bay County did vote to approve, you know, a .35 millage. And, and so, it looks like we're going to have a community center pool, a new community center pool, that is probably going to take some time due to the fact that a lot of the contractors who engage in, in building that size of pool are kind of limited in Michigan. Basically, three major companies that do that kind of work. And last we heard, they were about two years behind in terms of wait time for construction, but nonetheless, we're going to proceed ahead and try to make those decisions as best as we can, and try to make sure that the pool is open as soon as we can for the residents of Bay County and the supporters that supported that at the polls. And I think that's about it, Mr. Chairman.[1438.04] We... Since the last meeting, we haven't had a lot. Want to congratulate Commissioner Benajak on the wonderful trophy buck he got on opening day.
Thank you, Mr. Barsh.
I passed on a nice one, but not as nice as that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's it.
County clerks, did you ever report on the election?
We certified the November election this past Friday. I had several township and city clerks tell me that this is the smoothest election that they've had in their careers, especially considering the high turnout that we had. The Williams Township clerk stopped by my office earlier and we looked up his turnout. And he had 78% turnout for his first precinct. So, that's substantially high. And for early voting, to put into context, we had about 700 voters over nine days in February, about 560, I believe, in August, over nine days. We had over 9,000 voters come to our early voting precinct during that period. So, my workers did a fantastic job. Rebecca Gregorcheck did a wonderful job. People weren't taking breaks. People weren't taking lunches. We were trying to get voters in and out as quickly as we could. And it sounds like most of the wait time that we had, like the average is about 20 minutes. So, I don't think it can get much better. But, you know, we're going to do a lot of work. I think we did great, but we were pretty much at capacity. We can't handle that much... Many more voters than that with how we have it set up. So, I anticipate that now voters are aware of early voting, so they'll continue to show up. So, in 2026, when we have early voting again for the governor's race, I expect us to have to make some changes to be able to handle even more voters than we had now. So, it was great. It was a good election. So, yeah, we're just ready for next year, for an off year, probably not fully off budget. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any other county officials want to report anything?[1505.07]